I'd like to call this meeting at your North City Council order.
Mr. Marney? Mr. Raff?
Here.
Mr. Roletta?
Here.
Mr. Blake?
Here.
Mr. Bub? Mr. Cos?
Here.
Mrs. Floyd?
Here.
Mr. Guthrie?
Here.
Ms. Hall?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Mr. Johnson?
Here.
Thank you, Alton. Next on the agenda, we have the evocation by Mr. Johnson, followed by the pledge of allegiance. Please rise.
Let us pray. We thank the Father for the summer, for the time of vacations and time sharing fun and family. We're thankful that we can be in a community that cares. We're thankful for Chief Connell, and we bless him and be with him as he proceeds in the work of the office. Bless us in our deliberations. Be with those people in Texas who have been flooded out and who are in great need, and those people in our community who are in need. Be with those who've experienced the good fortune, and be with those who have experienced the loss of a loved one, especially the family of Bob Hill. Bless us in our endeavors, and may we ever serve you. We pray in your name. Amen.
Next, why the pledge of allegiance led by Director Spurgeon, who already led it once tonight, so we'll see how you got it.
The pledge of allegiance is the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson and Director Spurgeon. Next on the agenda this evening, we have caucus. That's a chance for council to discuss anything that may be pertaining to the agenda this evening. Do we have anything? Mr. Raff?
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to excuse Doug Burme.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Raff, second by Mrs. Floyd. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close sign. Thank you, Mr. Raff. Do we have anything else? Next, we have the minutes of the May 18th, 2015 North City Council meeting. Do we have a motion to approve those?
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Raff, second by Mr. Johnson. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close sign. That passes. Thank you. We have three reports of standing committees this evening. One from Finance, one from Service, and one from Capitol Improvements. Without objection, those will be received and filed. We have no reports from city officials this evening. Under Communications, we have four communications. One from Lindsay Dasher. Due to the calls from citizens in Newark concerned for the safety of their pets against coyotes, she has sent some information and tips for protecting ourselves and pets from coyotes. One from the Ohio Division of Liquor Control, transfer from the old bag of nails from the grill on 21st Street. And we have one from Dave McElfresh and Paul Moran, both just discussing the letters, discussing what they discussed at council last meeting. Without objection, those all will be received and filed. Next on the agenda tonight, we have comments from citizens. There's two places for comments from citizens, one now and one after the legislation. All I ask is you raise your hand so I can notify you, and we'll have you come forward and speak. So just give us your name and address for the record.
My name is Wayne Butcher, 263 Union Street. I do know about my case worker here with me tonight, and she told me the city did a great job on yards, but she told me to tell the city of Newark, shall I see my alley paved. Now, I know the city did a great job patching those holes in the alley, but my case worker there, she wants, my case worker leader wants to see my alley paved by the city of Newark. And my, I'd like to know, there's one thing serving tonight, that people speeding up and down Union Street, going to some red lights, but there's hot runs there like there was no tomorrow. And I've seen a lot of people squelching their brakes and everything else, speeding up and down Union Street. I know there's none there on the south end. Somebody tried to bring me back down West Main Street. I said, no, I'm sorry, I'm a south-ender. And my customer here, he wants me to stay in the south end, which I will. And I'm proud, I'm a south-ender. And my forecast tonight, weather's clear tonight, 56 tomorrow, high about 72. Temperature's gonna come up near 80, about 72 to 83 by Wednesday. I'm looking for chances more showers starting next week. I can just tell it's a 10-day weather forecast.
Thank you, Wade. Anyone else for this first section of citizens' comments?
Good evening. I'm Attorney John Veely, 3 South Park Place. I'm here today with Paul Wright, who is the owner of the building, we called it Rusty, he calls it Rusty Riders, that's the name of his business. Most of you are familiar with it. I'm gonna hand these out. These are some brochures he's had printed up to show. For those of you familiar with the project, the bridge project here, which is North 13, his is the building, that part of it inexplicably sticks out in the front. It used to be the old carryout. It's been that way, best we can tell, between 90 and 100 years. Nobody knows exactly why. What we're here for today is, there's some timing issues that we're running into at this point, and we wanted to clarify exactly whose times they are and how we can meet them. From our discussions with Brian Morehead, we understand that the right-of-way needs to be cleared by September 1st. We have lead and asbestos abatement that needs to occur with this before this can come down. They are on a 30-day, from the minute we say go, timeline. We are only 90 days away from the day when you need that right-of-way cleared. So, we're trying to figure out who it is that we need to be talking to, to find out whether these are ODOT deadlines, whether these are city of Newark deadlines, and to figure out some way we can coordinate this so that we can work together. What we're trying to do is coordinate this so that by taking down that overhang, again, we're not sure why it's there, we're not sure what permission was ever granted by the city of Newark in the first place to put it there. But to get that down and to reconstruct the front of the building so that it's a more attractive gateway to the city. I don't know if anybody can see these. These are the larger versions of the pictures you already have in your brochure. As far as cost figures go, at this point, to do what we're looking at, it's gonna be about $27,000 to take that overhang down, and it's gonna be about $49,000 to put the new project up. I think we're working on the funding on our end to put it up, but we'd like the city's help to get it down. So I just wanted to present this to you. If anybody has any comments or suggestions on who it is we should be talking to, or who we should be coordinating with, whether it's ODOT, or Brian, or Dave, or whoever else, we'd like to hear that. Anybody offer any suggestion?
This basically is not a question-and-answer period with council, but my suggestion would be, if you would talk to Mr. Rhodes right back here in the Elyshire.
Okay.
I think that would be, he is the service director, I think that would be your first step, and I think he'll give you a direction of where to go.
Okay. Paul, do you have any?
No.
Okay.
I think that this, you know, project seems unreasonable to some, but as a small business owner, we've been fortunate to purchase this property in Newark. Newark is full of these old properties that seem derelict and, you know, dilapidated. But when it comes to small business, you know, whether we decide between paying for a lease or paying to renovate a building, Newark's full of these, you know, they're great adventures, they're great opportunities, and really even our economic development and our Chamber of Commerce should look into small businesses that, you know, could look at these as possibilities as opposed to tearing them down, you know? It would be nice to see them stand, and to see small businesses come in and take a chance on them. Worst thing we have to lose is we gotta pay lease either way, you know? So for us, it's definitely an opportunity we'd like to see happen.
All right. Thank you, gentlemen.
Okay. Thank you.
You and I just chatted with Mr. Rhodes there. Anyone else for this first section of citizens' comments? Yes, sir.
My name's Darren Decker. I live at 188 Alcon Drive. And I'm not sure if council's aware, especially First Ward Council, is aware of the low manning in public safety. I have great concern, and I'm curious as to where the money is going. I understand that when you bill for EMS, that it has to go into the general fund, but particularly, we passed a public safety several years ago, a public safety levy, and to have staffing for the city of Newark Fire Department at 13 and 14 for this city is ridiculous, to say the least. I mean, the city of Newark, it's a typical manning of 18 and 19, call mutual aid departments, and some of them volunteer several times a day. And now we've dropped from 18 or 19 down to 13 or 14, and, you know, some of these mutual aid fire departments are getting into fires at the city of Newark before the city of Newark arrives on the scene. One of the most recent ones, Chief Decker documented arriving on the scene and waiting for a mutual aid engine to show up first. Probably for three or four minutes, he's sitting videotaped this house burning. And I'm curious, and I realize this is not a question-and-answer session, but I'll be getting back with the people in the Public Safety Committee and First Ward, where the money and the funding is going for public safety. I'm also curious to see if a billing for expenses, once we pass this public safety levy, were shifted directly out of pockets of public safety. So I'll be doing a public records request, because I want to see if some of this stuff has been shifted, and what city council is doing to try to bring those numbers back up. I understand that through the union binding arbitration, that minimum manning was lost with the city of Newark Fire, but that doesn't mean that we should just be letting those numbers go down. I think there's a certain number that this city has an obligation to commit to, and I don't know, you know, if it's pulling money from the general fund or putting 100% of the EMS billing, since that's generated from the Fire Department, back into the Fire Department. But again, 13 or 14, and closing down the East End Fire Station, and browning out some of the other fire stations is unacceptable.
All right, Mr. Decker. Is there anyone else for this section of public comments, or citizens' comments? We'll move on to ordinances on the first reading, 15-14.
Orders 15-14 by Mr. Blake, Mrs. Floyd, Mr. Cos, and ordinance changing the zoning classification of certain real property generally described as 13.457 acres, more or less, 6th Street, city of Newark, Licking County, Ohio, from that of LI Limited Industrial District to MFR Multi-Family Residence District.
15-14 will refer to the Planning Commission. Next, we have resolutions on a second reading, 15-46.
Resolution 15-46 by Mr. Blake, Mr. Cos, Mrs. Floyd, Mr. Marney, Mr. Raff. A resolution appropriating monies for the current expenses of municipal corporation.
You've heard the second reading of 15-46. What does your wish?
Mr. President, Mr. Blake, move to adopt 15-46.
Motion by Mr. Blake, second by Mrs. Floyd. Is there any discussion on 15-46? Seeing none, all, please call a roll of votes.
Mr. Marney? Mr. Raff?
Yes.
Mr. Roletta?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Bub?
Yes.
Mr. Cos?
Yes.
Mrs. Floyd?
Yes.
Mr. Guthrie?
Yes.
Ms. Hall?
Yes.
And Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
15-46 passes 9-0. Next on the second reading, we have 15-49.
Resolution 15-49 by Mr. Blake, Mr. Cos, Mrs. Floyd, Mr. Raff. A resolution appropriating monies for the current expenses of municipal corporation.
You've heard the second reading of 15-49. What does your wish?
Mr. President, I'll move to adopt 15-49.
Motion to adopt by Mrs. Floyd, second by Mr. Johnson. Is there any discussion on 15-49?
Mr. President?
Mrs. Floyd?
I just want to double-check that on everybody's piece of legislation, under the account number, it says 335.204.5533. I think it does, but Mr. Rhodes had given me beforehand, I think originally it came through as coming out of the police department, not out of the Fire Department, that you corrected.
I did.
Okay. Just wanted to double-check.
So the correct number's 3352045533, which is what we have now.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Alton, please call a roll of votes.
Mr. Marney? Mr. Raff?
Yes.
Mr. Roletta?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Bub?
Yes.
Mr. Cos?
Yes.
Mrs. Floyd?
Yes.
Mr. Guthrie?
Yes.
Ms. Hall?
Yes.
And Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
15-49 passes 9-0. Next, we have resolutions on the first reading, 15-50.
Resolution 15-50 by Mr. Blake, Mrs. Floyd, Mr. Cos. A resolution authorizing and directing the auditor of the city of Newark to pay bills on behalf of the Safety Department pursuant to Section 5705.41D, then annul certification and declaring an emergency.
15-50 is an emergency, so it'll be read once. What is your wish?
Mr. President, move to adopt 15-50.
Motion by Mr. Blake, second by Mrs. Floyd. Is there any discussion on 15-50? Alton, please call a roll of votes.
Mr. Marney? Mr. Raff?
Yes.
Mr. Roletta?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Bub?
Yes.
Mr. Cos?
Yes.
Mrs. Floyd?
Yes.
Mr. Guthrie?
Yes.
Ms. Hall?
Yes.
And Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
15-50 passes 9-0. Next on the first reading, we have 15-51.
Resolution 15-51 by Mr. Blake, Mrs. Floyd, Mr. Cos. A resolution appropriating monies for the current expenses of municipal corporation.
15-51 will be held for a second reading. See none, all, please call a roll of votes.
I'll move to waive the two-day review rule.
Move to waive the two-day review rule, this Hall. That's what I got. This, Mrs. Floyd. Ms. Hall, why would we be waiving the two-day review rule?
They want to get started on the improvements.
Thank you. Alton, please call a roll of votes.
Mr. Marney? Mr. Raff?
Yes.
Mr. Roletta?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Bub?
Yes.
Mr. Cos?
Yes.
Mrs. Floyd?
Yes.
Mr. Guthrie?
No.
Ms. Hall?
Yes.
And Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Two-day review rule has been waived. Ms. Hall?
Motion.
Motion to adopt by Ms. Hall, there's a second, second by Mrs. Floyd. Is there any discussion on, any other discussion now on 15-51? Seeing none, all, please call a roll of votes.
Mr. Marney? Mr. Raff?
Yes.
Mr. Roletta?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Bub?
Yes.
Mr. Cos?
Yes.
Mrs. Floyd?
Yes.
Mr. Guthrie?
Yes.
Ms. Hall?
Yes.
And Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
15-51 has passed 9-0. Next on the first reading, we have 15-52.
Resolution 15-52 by Mr. Blake, Mrs. Floyd, Mr. Cos. A resolution appropriating monies for the current expenses of municipal corporation.
15-52 will be held for a second reading. Next, we have 15-53.
Resolution 15-53 by Mr. Blake, Mrs. Floyd, Mr. Cos. A resolution appropriating monies for the current expenses of municipal corporation.
15-53, Mr. Blake?
Mr. President, move to waive the two-day reading rule.
Motion by Mr. Blake to waive the two-day reading, little second by Mrs. Floyd. Mr. Blake?
They want to get construction projects started around 30th Street, and also this resolution has the compensation for employee.
Thank you, Mr. Blake. Alton, please call a roll, waive the two-day review rule.
Mr. Marney? Mr. Raff?
Yes.
Mr. Roletta?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Bub?
Yes.
Mr. Cos?
Yes.
Mrs. Floyd?
Yes.
Mr. Guthrie?
No.
Ms. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
The two-day review rule has been waived. If you call somebody else, I guess the two-day review rule has been waived. Mr. Blake?
Move to adopt 15-53.
Motion by Mr. Blake, second by Mrs. Floyd. Is there any other discussion on 15-53? Seeing none, all, please call a roll of votes.
Mr. Marney? Mr. Raff?
Yes.
Mr. Roletta?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Bub?
Yes.
Mr. Cos?
Yes.
Mrs. Floyd?
Yes.
Mr. Guthrie?
Yes.
Ms. Hall?
Yes.
And Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
15-53 passes 9-0. Next on the first reading, we have 15-54.
Resolution 15-54 by Mrs. Floyd. This is a final resolution by the city of Newark in which we are to agree to the construction of new interchange over State Route 16 to replace the current at-grade intersection with Cherry Valley Road lying within the city limits of Newark.
15-54 will be held for a second reading. Next, we have 15-55.
Resolution 15-55 by Mr. Cos and Mrs. Floyd. A resolution appropriating the real estate known as parcel 054-244170-00.000. Newark Licking County located at 1091 West Church Street, Newark Licking County, Ohio, authorizing the Director of Law to proceed with a complaint for appropriation in the Licking County Court of Common Pleas and declaring an emergency.
15-55 is an emergency. What does your wish? Mr. President, Mr. Cos?
Make a motion to adopt 15-55.
Motion to adopt by Mr. Cos?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Floyd. Is there any discussion on 15-55? Seeing none, all, please call a roll of votes.
Mr. Marney? Mr. Raff?
Yes.
Mr. Roletta?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Bub?
Yes.
Mr. Cos?
Yes.
Mrs. Floyd?
Yes.
Mr. Guthrie?
Yes.
Ms. Hall?
Yes.
And Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
15-55 passes 9-0. And last for resolutions this evening, resolutions on the first reading, 15-56.
Resolution 15-56 by Mr. Cos and Mrs. Floyd. A resolution appropriating the real estate known as parcel 054-242994-00.000. Newark Licking County located at 318 North 30th Street, Newark Licking County, Ohio, authorizing the Director of Law to proceed with a complaint for appropriation in the Licking County Court of Common Pleas and declaring an emergency.
Once again, 15-56 is an emergency, so it'll be read once. What is your wish?
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to adopt 15-56.
Motion by Mr. Cos?
Second.
Second by Mr. Raff. Is there any discussion on 15-56? Seeing none, all, please call a roll of votes.
Mr. Marney? Mr. Raff?
Yes.
Mr. Roletta?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Bub?
Yes.
Mr. Cos?
Yes.
Mrs. Floyd?
Yes.
Mr. Guthrie?
Yes.
Ms. Hall?
Yes.
And Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
15-56 passes 9-0. And that concludes our legislation for this evening. Thank you for your attention. Next on the agenda is our second opportunity for comments from citizens. Again, this is not a debate of council, this is just your opportunity to have your opinion heard. Do we have anyone that would like to speak?
My name's Wayne Butcher, 263 Union Street. I would just say, I want to say congratulations, I'll please Chief Powell Connor. That was my first time ever seeing actual swearing-in. That was my first time. And yeah, I know by now, I used to be a school state patrol officer. I used to wear the school state patrol badge, belt. I used to wear a Los Angeles police badge. Now, I got me to have one, it's a special police badge, which I take good care of, I'm proud of. I would just say, I want to congratulate him on his accomplishment, yeah, Police Chief. That was my first time ever seeing somebody like that. In Germany, let me just rest assured you, I am going to stay in the south end. I don't care what everybody tells me, and don't care what wants me to do, I want to stay with you. And the south end was, that's where, you always tell me, that's where I belong. You know, some Germans are right, they're absolutely right, that's where I'm wrong. That passed.
Thank you, Mr. Butcher. Anyone else? Anyone from the administration side would like to make a comment? Director Spurgeon?
Good evening, Mr. President. I'll be brief. Tonight was a great night in public safety, but there are some unsung heroes who donate their time. So on behalf of myself and the entire city, I want to thank Officer Shaw and the rest of our reserve officers for coming here in their own time and keeping us safe. Thank you.
Thank you, Director. Anyone else would like to make a comment? Okay, Ms. Lanis this evening, our Honorable Mr. Johnson. I'll pass. Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Our Honorable Assistant Law Director, Clifford.
I will pass, Mr. President. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Hall?
Hi, just a couple of comments. We've had a pretty busy week around here, starting with Memorial Day on Monday, and great services down at Cedar Hill Cemetery. I want to thank all the crew down there that did an outstanding job making the cemetery probably look at its best in 12 or 14 years, I would think, and so it's a very solemn occasion and a good occasion. It was a nice turnout with Veterans Service Organization, everybody involved at that. This week has been a busy week with schools as they wind up for this year, and I want to congratulate all the students that will be graduating and have graduated. Newark, I certainly had some challenges outside in the weather, but they weathered through that, is a pun of phrase. And I spent some time with some of the graduates this week, called a college, breakfasted a few things, and we should all be very proud of all those students that are moving ahead. And then Friday night was very busy downtown here with food trucks, and certainly it's the DNA of the final Friday, and then the Strawberry Festival that seemed to work out very well, and its new temporary location is doing very well. So I want to thank everybody that worked hard on that. With that, I'll pass. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Raff?
Thank you.
If you'll allow me to have a discussion maybe afterwards with the Mayor or Director Spurgeon, maybe we can do something in a safety committee meeting and have a conversation about that, if that would be okay. Mr. Johnson.
Almost at the end, you said, "What you all said." But I think, I thought Strawberry's in Square went very well, and speaking from the perspective of the Elks that had a wedding on Saturday night, it really, it seemed to work out fairly well. We had to guard the parking, and it turned out people had a nice wedding, and the parking turned out fine, and I think people were generally very respectful, and I appreciate that they were that, going to Strawberry's and coming to the various activities downtown. So I thank everyone who did that. Again, I want to congratulate the chief, and we look forward to his service.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. And I'll just say what everybody said, including Mr. Johnson. We're not going to approve you at all. Our next committee meeting is June eighth at 5:30 here in this room, and our next council meeting will be June fifteenth, at seven o'clock. Is there a motion adjourned? Motion by Mr. Raff, second by Mr. Cost. I'll do a favor, sing a five by saying aye. Thank you, your adjourned. Thank you for coming. Thank you for your attention.